All right, folks, let's come back to order here if we could on our next two docketed items. And I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would read the next two items, please.
Docket PZ 17-011, application has been filed by Steven Sauerbeck for the approval of a conditional use permit for a drive-in theater on approximately 30 acres. The property is located at 2,300 block of Commerce Parkway LaGrange. The zoning is IPD Industrial Park District. Docket PZ 17-012, application has been filed by Steven Sauerbeck for approval of a development plan with waivers from Section 210-080A, Parking Area Standards, Section 300-080, Interior Landscape Areas for vehicular use areas of the Oldham County Zoning Ordinance, and Section 6.3, Item F, Non-Residential Subdivision Design Principles of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations. The property is located at the 2,300 block of Commerce Parkway LaGrange. The zoning is IPD Industrial Park District.
All right, Ms. Fox, thank you. And again, I'll call on Ms. Feeman to introduce the docket, please.
All right. Brooke Feeman, Planner with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. You have two dockets before you with this application. There's the conditional use permit, which is PZ 17-011 for a drive-in theater. And it is on approximately 30.73 acres. In my staff report, in addition to the applications, that 35, but that was a mistake. It's 30.73 acres based on the survey that was done by the engineer. You're also reviewing a application for a development plan with waivers, and that's docket PZ 17-012. It's located at the 2,300 block of Commerce Parkway, located in LaGrange. It's zoned IPD Industrial Park District. So the total tract that's circled in red is approximately 100.99 acres. The conditional use permit request is for 30.74 acres. You can see property to the north is AG1, property to the south is zoned IPD, in addition to the east and the west. So this is the development plan request with waivers. The plan shows that the 100-acre tract will be divided into three tracts total, which can be accomplished by minor plat, which is staff approval. This is just a preliminary division, just giving you an idea of what the public road, proposed public road will serve. There are no other proposed uses at this time for tracks two and three. You can see that track one is the proposed conditional use permit for the drive-in theater. And just to give you an idea of the orientation of the site, you can see the private drive will be located off of Commerce Parkway in that location. And the public road will serve the remaining approximately 69 acres of this tract as well. Wanted to go ahead and address the conditional use permit request. I know that you probably have never seen a conditional use permit application. Oftentimes, the Board of Adjustments reviews these. But KRS 100 does allow for the Planning Commission to review and approve or deny conditional use permit requests.
And just to clarify, the reason that they're doing that is because we are the only ones that can do the waiver request?
Correct. The Planning Commission reviews development plans and waivers. And so since they were coming to the Planning Commission for that review, we thought that we could bind them all together. That way, it was a more comprehensive review by one body.
Thank you.
So related to the conditional use permit, applicant is requesting to construct a drive-in theater on approximately 30.74 acres of a 100.99 acre tract. Section 210-20 IPD Conditional Uses states that all conditional uses permitted in I-1 light industrial district are permitted as conditional uses. And Section 190-130 I-1 Conditional Uses lists drive-in theaters. The public road is intended to serve the drive-in and future uses of the remaining land, which is about 68.71 acres. And you can see the public road runs back and serves the drive-in theater. And I did want to mention also that a lot of times with conditional uses, we do have a section that talks about under which circumstances a conditional use could be approved. But we do not, as a part of our zoning ordinance, have a section that talks specifically about drive-in theaters. So there are no set of requirements in our zoning ordinance that they specifically have to meet for this request. The plan outlines a two-phased development for the drive-in. Phase one includes a 50-foot tall by 85 viewing screen, parking for one viewing screen, which includes 450 spaces, three ticket booths, one 10-by-10 projection building, one building that contains restrooms and concessions, and that's 3,500 square feet. Construction of the public road that will serve the 100-acre tract for other potential -- along with -- that will serve other potential users. Construction of the private road network serving as ingress and egress for the first screen and the first parking area. And extension of the water main fire hydrants and sanitary sewers that will serve this development. And so this is the -- you can see the entirety of the 100-acre tract. And then I just highlighted in here what phase one looks like. You can see the public road that's highlighted, along with the private road network that circles the 450 parking space gravel area, along with the viewing screen and a playground. They'll also construct the concession stand and the little 10-by-10 projection utility And this is just a zoomed-in view of the phase one development that's highlighted. So you can see the three ticket booths that are served by the private roadway network, and it follows the arrows all the way around to exit back onto the public road network. Phase two will include a second 50-by-85-foot viewing screen, parking for a second viewing screen, which allows up to 350 cars, a second 10-by-10 projection building, a maintenance shed in phase two of the private roadway network serving as ingress and egress for the second screen and parking area. So this is the entirety of the site that includes both phase one and phase two of the project. So this would be at completion. The total parking spaces provided on the proposed plan is 816 spaces. In my staff report and on the parking summary, that's actually on the plan, there is a mistake and it says the total parking is 916 spaces. But if you add up the 450 in phase one and the 350 in phase two, in addition to the 16 spaces for the employees, it totals 816 spaces. Included in that number are the 16 handicap spaces that will be paved to meet ADA requirements. The minimum required under Section 281-10 Parking Standards for movie theaters, which are indoor, there are no outdoor -- no standards for outdoor theaters, is one space for every four seats, and this does exceed that minimum. So this is just showing you the area of the 450 spaces and the 350 spaces, and then the 16 spaces for the employee parking located at the front of the property. Related to the development plan, applicant is requesting a waiver of Section 210-ADA, which is Parking Area Standards, stating parking surfaces, including driveway entrances and outside storage areas, shall be paved with asphalt, concrete, and paver blocks. And this is specifically related to the Industrial Park District regulations. The proposed plan shows 4,700 -- 4,738 square feet of gravel parking surface and 13,761 square feet of pavement parking, which is vehicular use area surface. The handicap spaces will be paved in addition to the public road serving the entire 100-acre tract. And the private access road will be paved as well that serves as ingress and egress for the drive-in theater. And if you refer back to the applicant's justification statement, number one, for the parking area standards, it specifically talks about the additional runoff that would be created by nearly 500,000 square feet of paved area would be excessive. And so these are the proposed gravel areas. And you can see the ingress and egress is going to be paved to serve the site. So the second waiver is of Section 210-80, which is Interior or Landscape Areas, and that states that interior landscape areas are required to fragment large impervious surface areas and to allow for a greater distribution of tree canopy coverage. So if waiver one is granted, the parking areas will be pervious, which is gravel, which negates the need to fragment large impervious surface areas. And the applicant stated in their justification statement that the landscape islands will hinder the view of the screens and that the surrounding area will remain vegetated. And just for your information, I know you don't deal with landscaping a lot, so just wanted to give you an idea of what actually an interior landscape island is. On the bottom, you see an example of a landscape plan, and that's the portion that's circled in red is what we consider an ILA. And you see the picture at the top is an ILA. Typically, it's just a small island that has trees and ground cover that separates cars. The applicant is requesting a third waiver of Section 6.3, Item F, Non-Residential Subdivision Design Principles of the Oldham County Subdivision Regulations, which states that commercial and office subdivisions must provide sidewalks on both sides of streets. The applicant is proposing to construct a sidewalk on one side of the public road, and you can see the applicant's justification number three for the reasoning related to excessive cost and the topography of the site, in addition to the number of users that will be -- that will use that public road. So I just wanted to show you that the sidewalk -- they are proposing a sidewalk on the right side of the public road, and that will serve all of the tracts and connect to the greenway that's located on Commerce Parkway. So this is a very large site. It was difficult to get pictures of. But this is on Commerce Parkway, and you can see the aerial view at the bottom. There's a red star. The red star is where I am standing. I'm standing across the street, and I'm looking into the site. So this is the site that you're reviewing today. And just a zoomed-in view of the site, heavily wooded, rolling hills. And this is -- I'm actually across the street now at the portion we were just looking at, looking into the site. This is looking east on Commerce Parkway. Again, the red star on the aerial is where I am standing in relation to the rest of the site. And this is looking towards LaGrange. This is -- you can see on the aerial view, highlighted in blue is one of the adjoining property owners, which is the Bluegrass Cooperative. And I'm standing at their entrance. So you can see the red star is where I'm standing. And I'm looking into the side of the site in question today. And this is the southeast, so looking across the street. This is a view from Button Lane. So if you look on the aerial site, Button Lane is located off of Commerce Parkway to the east. And I'm standing at 2112 Button Lane from Button Lane Road, where the red star is, and looking into the site. So I'm looking really in this location. And this is, again, just another view from 2112 Button Lane. This is a view from the top of the hill at Button Lane. You can see where I am. The red star is located at 2,000 Button Lane, which is currently a vacant site. And I'm looking into the vacant site, past that, into the site in question, which is really located back in this direction. Just another view of the vacant site, in addition to 2,300 Commerce Parkway. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for a drive-in movie theater. That's PZ 17-011. And a development plan, which includes three waivers, one for Parking Area Standards, one for Interior Landscape Areas, and one for Non-Residential Subdivision Design Principles related to a sidewalk required on both sides, since they're only providing one side for a sidewalk. And that's all that I have. I think Paula is here with traffic, if you'd like to.
Sure.
Just wanted to go over the binding elements really quick, and we are tying these to the development plan. Number six talks about the applicant being required to coordinate with Oldham County Police Department and LaGrange Police Department to determine appropriate personnel and time period of traffic management and security plan. This came directly from Paula's traffic study, which she'll review with you. But we did speak with Colonel Greg Smith, the Chief of Police, about -- conferring with the applicant about possibly setting up an off-duty police officer to help with the traffic mitigation. And his response is here, and I'll just give you a second to read that, but basically said that there may be some issues, but nothing that would recommend them to not be in favor or to be against this project. And at this time, they don't feel that a off-duty police officer would be necessary unless at some point they see that at opening, there are issues that would be caused. And that's all that I have.
Okay. I'll call on Ms. Wall if you want to come up and do your report. We swore you in at first, didn't we? Okay? Just name an address for the record, if you would.
Paula Wall, Neil Schaefer, 200 Winnington Parkway, Suite 205, 40222.
And for the folks that are here that don't know, she's the traffic consultant for the Planning Commission.
As Brooke stated, I conducted a traffic analysis that looked at the different phases of the proposal for the drive-in. Again, this is just a shot of the study area and the site location and the site plan, which we've all been looking at. So as part of my study, reviewed the location and the area for the review, looked at the project information provided by staff and the applicant. There's also been several traffic studies that have been done on Commerce Parkway in the last year or so, so those were reviewed. We also did a existing traffic count of the roadway adjacent to the property. The scope of the study includes the assessment of any potential impacts of the future growth and by the development of the drive-in during the peak hour entry operation at the intersection of the Commerce Parkway and the drive-in driveway, which is the road that serves those three tracts. As part of that, we looked at the different phases and whether a left-turn lane or a right-turn lane would be required on Commerce Parkway with each phase. The existing traffic we studied is not your typical. Usually, I'm used to talking about peak hours, which you're all familiar with me saying the PM peak hour is usually four to six. Because this is an evening-type generator, movies won't start till dusk. So the applicant said that, you know, the earliest likely in the spring, that, you know, they would be having customers, maybe maybe like eight o'clock movies. Gates would open maybe an hour before that. So I did a six-to-nine count, and I looked at the seven-to-eight PM hour for traffic. Traffic does significantly drop off from six to seven. So that helps with the traffic flow in the area. Also added the nominal, just general growth that's occurring in the area that's been used for Commerce Parkway. The trip generation is a little bit different as well. Usually, I'm talking about ITE trip generation manual. There's nothing for a -- no data available that I could find for a drive-in theater. So basically, I looked at worst-case scenario, assuming all the 450 spaces were going to be occupied for the evening, which is pretty conservative, I would say, worst-case. I mean, we hope, we hope that happens. I know that he hopes that happens. So that was the basis of the study. And also the distribution, where they're coming to and from, whether it's from LaGrange or from the east. I just -- I base that on existing traffic, traffic flow. Again, the conclusions and recommendations, the traffic analysis results indicated that a separate eastbound left-turn lane and a westbound right-turn lane on Commerce Parkway are not warranted for the phase one, which is the single drive-in. However, assuming the phase two development, the results indicated that a separate eastbound left-turn lane is warranted, the right-turn lane still is not warranted. Again, we didn't assume any development for those other tracts, two or three as well. So depending on what those uses are, those in itself, even with a phase one, could trigger the left-turn or right-turn requirement. So I'm basically recommending that future -- with the future development of the track two, track three, and/or the phase two of the drive-in, that we do an updated study to determine the area impacts and road improvements at that time. Basically, at that time, hopefully, you know, the theater's open, we can actually do some counts with that and know what the true, you know, average kind of trip generation is, and we'll have a better idea of what is proposed for those other tracts, because they are fairly large. If it was -- you know, there could be some significant generators, or it could be a larger industrial that maybe is not. So at this time, it was because I looked at the worst case and it did not trigger it, I thought it was prudent to go ahead and just wait till we know and we have more The traffic management plan that was provided by the applicant included the queue space before the ticket booths and assistance from hired. He proposed that they use the off-duty police on the weekends, or any busy weekends, be stationed there to facilitate traffic in and out of the shows. And they would also be there to provide security on the site. Because we don't know how popular this may be, and we don't know how much traffic's going to generate, or what kind of queues, or what, you know, if people are going to come, you know, all at once, or if over the time period, I was recommending initially to go ahead and have that officer there to facilitate entering and exiting, because you're not going to have the additional lanes on Commerce Parkway. And it would just be able to help facilitate, if an officer could stop a vehicle and allow, like, a large number of vehicles to enter the site without greatly impeding the -- just the normal traffic, regular traffic that's on Commerce Parkway. I also thought exiting a traffic control officer would be helpful in the evening to get the large number out. You could just basically allow the free flow, rather than just each individual vehicle approaching Commerce Parkway and decide that, you know, there's gaps to exit. And that would help facilitate more free-flow movement, so cars aren't sitting in queue, idling for, you know, just to help facilitate that and minimize that. So in conclusion, based on the projected traffic volumes and the traffic generated by phase one, I feel like there's going to be -- there's -- believe there's going to be a manageable impact to existing road network, and no road improvements are required at this time. But further development will likely require the road improvements. So therefore, an updated analysis with current traffic counts and more determined trip generation at that time will be known, and we can do a more accurate study. Also, an adequate traffic management plan should be in place to continuously monitor and facilitate the traffic flow in and out of the site.
All righty. Thank you very much. And Commissioners, before I open it up for questions, they -- pretty long dockets here, and so the time, the 20-minute time has expired on the introduction of the applicant. So if we can do it just by common consent, I'd like to add 10 minutes for our questions for staffs, for staff. So we'll just do it by common consent, if that's okay. And we'll just add 10 minutes to the staff's questioning time here. With that, let me ask one question, I guess, Ms. Feeman, before we get started here. The 50-foot height requirement, does that require a waiver or any -- I mean, I thought 35 feet was the height that's allowed in Oldham County. Is that not correct?
Sorry. Looking on IPD. So there shall be no maximum height, provided all minimum yards are increased five feet for each story over three stories or 45 feet.
Say that again.
There shall be no maximum height, provided all minimum yards are increased five feet for each story over three stories or 45 feet.
Okay.
So they meet their -- they far exceed the minimum side yard setbacks, which would allow them to increase by five feet over the 45 minimum.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, questions for staff? Mr. Douglas?
Mike, I have maybe a couple of questions for the traffic engineer. Morning.
Hey.
Your study was based on -- let me ask the question. Was your study based on the officer being present at the intersection or at the location to help the traffic flow in and out?
The analysis doesn't assume -- the analysis that I did, whether a left-turn lane is required, does not assume a traffic control officer. That's just normal traffic flow.
Okay.
Based on volumes and thresholds, whether it meets those requirements or not.
And based on that volume, if there was, you're estimating, say, 203 vehicles turning left, did you estimate the timeframe when those vehicles would be entering the facility? And the length of the road, the private access road, to get to the ticket booth?
That's a volume that's over an hour period. Again, it's -- the analysis is a -- it's not like a capacity analysis where it looks like a peak 15-minute. It's a graph threshold that's used by the state, and it's based on a volume over an hour, and also what's opposing it. It's not to the level of looking at flows in and out. It's more based on threshold numbers.
But you would state that if there was 200 vehicles in an hour or two-hour timeframe, how much traffic that would hold back on Commerce Parkway, correct?
It could, yes. If you had --
So does that impede the rest of the 57, 60 vehicles, or whatever you have down there, to flow through eastbound on Commerce Parkway? Because you're going to add those additional vehicles?
Yes, because you won't have -- you only have one lane there. So you're going to have that queue of vehicle waiting for a left turner to be able to clear -- you know, you're going to have that opposing traffic of all the rights, people trying to go in and the left. So a traffic officer would definitely be able to facilitate that movement and not.
But based on Chief Smith's letter, there was no guarantee he was going to be there every day or every night?
Well, that, you know, I'm not -- the applicant was proposing hiring the off-duty themselves, like a contract.
But we don't --
Can I clarify that? You know, the traffic analysis and what the police officer says are somewhat independent. Her recommendation was based strictly on traffic generation. Then we reached out to Chief Smith to determine whether or not he felt, from a traffic control position -- position, that we should have somebody there all the time, and.
I'm just concerned that she put it in her report, though.
Understand.
That's generates conversation here, that she added this to her report, which, if it didn't have any significance, then why put it in a report?
Understand. That's why, why, why we reached out to the police department.
Right.
And the police department.
Kind of contradicts what her analysis are.
Granted, but they said they would work with the applicant to determine, because there may be a Tuesday night where there's no need, as opposed to every night.
Right.
So the Oldham County Police Department is willing to monitor that, to make sure whether or not there needs to be one there every night.
Then, then the follow-up question will be to you is, that you said in future development of track, even Phase Two, and even the future development of Track Two and Track Three, could pose the need for those turning lanes?
Correct.
Who do you propose will construct those turning lanes?
The.
The city, the county, or the applicants? Or how do we hold this applicant to build those turning lanes?
The applicant at the time that is determined would be responsible for construction of those improvements at the time of those proposals.
So whoever owns, whoever's future is buying Track Two and Track Three, which may not have the same amount of traffic going in?
Well, there, we, we've talked about this before. There's potentially an overall study of Commerce Parkway that's going to be conducted. Jim, you want to, you want to speak to that, or do you want me to continue?
I can't, but finish your sentence.
Okay. In that, it's likely a more comprehensive approach to analysis of Commerce Parkway and, and, and overall impacts, and what, it's likely Commerce Parkway someday will need to be three-lane section, which would be a center-turn lane. So there's some discussion that, once we have this study and we know what the overall impact is of the whole corridor, and what each individual site development may be impact, its responsibility, there could be some, an overall project done someday, and that each site would contribute their fair share of those overall improvements. So that's kind of a, more of a long-term proposal to potentially alleviate. But today, looking at the impact and what their responsibility is for the first phase of the drive-in, is that they're not, it, it doesn't technically require it today, with just the one phase that they're.
Based on the assumption that you're saying the future development of Track Two and Track Three, and also, there may be the need for a traffic officer there to help pose that traffic in and out?
Yes.
Which, we don't have a guarantee that may happen.
Well, the applicant is offering to do that.
I understand that.
We've talked to the police department about whether or not, and they're willing to monitor to see what kind of traffic it generates on various nights, to determine whether or not it has to be every night, or just on certain nights.
But.
And I don't know that the, what the police department's saying doesn't, I mean, if the applicant still was proposing to provide that.
Yeah, they are.
I think the, I don't think the police department is opposed.
That's correct. That's correct. And then the, since we don't know what is going to happen on Tracks Two and Three, they may be at peak-hour generators, versus these are off-peak-hour generators. So if Track Two were to be developed and it required the turn lanes, then they would be responsible to put them in, because they generate traffic on peak hours. That changed, and that's why she's recommended that at either one development of Track Two, Three, or Phase Two, that we do a new analysis to determine what the impact is. Then we have some history. We know exactly what these generate and when they generate them. And then there are other users along Commerce Parkway that are going to generate additional traffic, whether it's a grocery store, hardware store, auto dealership, whoever it might be, are going to all contribute to additional traffic. And that's why she's recommending that we review it at the next phase of development, whatever it might be, because there could be no additional traffic, or there could be a lot of additional traffic. But that also comports with the corridor study that we're considering doing, that looks at the entire three-mile length of Commerce Parkway, and what the impacts are of all these developments, even though some of them, we've said, they don't need turn lanes. Eventually, they're going to be part of the trip, trip generation, and their entrances may or may not fail because of turning movements. So we're going to widen Commerce Parkway at some point. We don't yet know how we're going to do it, but we're going to have a plan to do it.
Okay, let me suggest this chair here. We're running up on our, on our time for questioning of the staff. Do you all, can you all hold up and maybe when they can answer some of these questions that we have? And then we'll have plenty of time, and we can, you know, if we need to add time to our questioning of the applicant, we can, can do that at that time. Ms. Albertson, I know you had your hand up. Do you have something just for staff?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's, we'll, we'll take your question, and then we'll open it up for the applicant to make their presentation.
Just before you, before you leave me, I have one more question for staff, though. This is for Mr. Harris. Have you had a chance to review the site plan?
I have.
And, and I'm sure you probably know about the 100-foot right-of-way for Texas Pipeline.
Yes, I do.
And I see they're putting a permanent fixture on that property. Did they provide you any kind of waiver or explanation from Texas Gas Line that they're putting that?
No, they haven't. They're still, it's considered a preliminary or conceptual design. There's no construction plans submitted. We haven't covered stormwater. They are aware that grading within that area, changing elevations, is something that has to be pretty much watched, and we have discussed.
And there's that blue line stream that runs through there, goes to Cory's Fork?
Yes.
And they're aware of the topography that generates the stormwater that runs through there, or they will be?
Yes.
And, and can you give the Commissioners an explanation of the, the gravel, huge gravel parking lots, for the parking areas, for the cinema? Is that better for, for drainage, for stormwater drainage, or would pavement or green space?
That's kind of a mixed question. Gravel tends to cause dust, tends to be crushed as you drive over it over time. So when it rains, tends to add more fines to the stormwater runoff. That doesn't mean that it's not being cleaned as it comes off by the applicant. We haven't seen detailed calculations. We have briefly discussed the location of detention basins. They proposed, their engineer has proposed putting them within the blue line stream. I suggested that's probably not practical, and pointed him to the Corps of Engineers, which is where that would have to start.
Correct. Okay. That's all I have for staff.
Ms. Albertson, do you have a question for staff?
Yes, these are quick questions. Is there a restriction on building, buildings on the Texas gas easement?
Yes, you can't put permanent.
Okay, I suspected that.
You can, you can cross it, and occasionally, they, I mean, you've got to get approvals from them, but you can't put a permanent building on it.
I suspected that. All right. And how wide would the sidewalks be for the handicap? Is there a requirement, or?
You might have to meet any requirements, which I believe is a minimum of four feet.
Four feet?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's it for now.
All right, well, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am?
I have some questions for staff. I, I can do it later because of the time constraint, but I just want to preserve my ability to question staff.
Okay, well, you know, we might, some of these might be able to be answered by the applicant or whatever, so why don't we?
These will be personal, not, I, things that were said in their presentations.
Okay, well, go ahead, go ahead. You can ask them.
Paula, when you, when you said you assumed the worst-case scenario when you did your traffic study, what's your definition of worst-case? Did you include things that have already been proposed or approved to go in along Commerce Parkway?
There was some added growth for, to account for general growth and added.
For that to be a 24-hour.
Yeah. There was general growth in for that. And then there was also, when I said worst-case, it was assuming every parking spot would be full at the theater.
But the development along Commerce, we've got a hotel, two restaurants, a car dealership that will probably stay open till nine. The grocery will be a 24-hour, and the hardware store will probably close at six, but.
The general, the general growth that was added is taken into account that.
And that's still not over the.
Not, did not meet the threshold, because again, base traffic out on Commerce Parkway is significantly drops off. You know, you don't have that commuter, people going home to and from work. It significantly drops off in that seven-to-eight-hour timeframe.
Did you include the Rawlings traffic? Rawlings comes across the, the new bridge and comes out.
Well, we took existing, we took existing traffic data that was already out there. So it would have included whatever was there for Rawlings.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's, let's move on into the presentation about the applicant. Mr. Baxter, I assume that would be you?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. And I have with me Stephen Sauerbach and Mark Madison, and they're both going to testify. So if I could get them sworn, please, Mr. Chairman.
All right, absolutely. Ms. Fox?
Do you saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Baxter, you know the, what we ask, name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Barry Baxter. I'm an attorney here in La Grange. My address is 117 West Main Street. I represent the applicant, Stephen Sauerbach, who is present and prepared to testify today. And I may refer at points to, he's, he's got a PowerPoint presentation he's going to use, and I may refer at points to the drawing of the site that, that has been put down on the overhead projector. First of all, just to give you all a little background, Mr. Sauerbach has been exploring, doing this project for a period of time. He, you all probably heard that he had another site in mind. That site was on Old La Grange Road, Sisters of Mercy, I think is what it's called, is the site. And he had actually a neighborhood meeting that I thankfully did not attend, because apparently it was a lynch mob. So he quickly figured out that that was not a particularly good location, and he began to look for other locations that might not have the same objections from neighbors that that particular site occasioned. So in looking for a location, he found this particular site. It is a piece of property owned by Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter owns the entire 100-acre site. And what is being proposed is that Mr. Carpenter would divide that site into three parcels. That's something that I understood could be done at the staff level. And that Mr. Sauerbach would be purchasing what is known as Track One, which is located in the back of the property and would require the construction of a road to reach the site. That road is depicted on this drawing. It would be a cul-de-sac-type road. It would terminate at the property that is proposed. This particular site would then be bounded by the remaining parcels owned by Mr. Carpenter on the south and the east, the CSX railroad tracks on the north, and the co-op on the west. So we don't envision at this point having any problems with our neighbors, because, quite frankly, we don't really have a whole lot of neighbors that are going to be around at past 7:00 in the evening when this particular piece of property is going to be operational. We, we're looking, obviously, we got, we got several things that we have to address. The first thing is the conditional use permit. Because of the nature of this location in the industrial park, we have to get the conditional use permit. We think that this particular site, again, is, is a good site, a good location within the industrial park, in that we're not going to have these other issues that we talked, that I talked about with any other site that, that has been looked at. And we think the conditional use per, permit, excuse me, is appropriate. The parking area standards, you know, we, we all, we, we got to be candid here. I mean, certainly, putting down gravel is much more economically feasible for my client than paving this entire site. There's no question about that. And if we were to stand up here and to try to tell you all that this is all about the environment, and this is, you know, that, that would just be untrue. And so I need to be upfront with you all that this is more economical and a better way for my client to proceed, to, to have gravel on the internal portion of the site. With that being said, there is obviously an issue if we were to have to put pavement down, and you pave this entire area, you're creating a, a large area of impervious surface, which we don't think would be necessarily appropriate. And this all ties in, in some respects, to the interior landscaping. Because of the fact that certainly wouldn't make any sense to have these little traffic islands, these little bumps with trees, and other landscaping in the middle of this giant parking lot, that you don't want to obstruct anybody's view, because everybody's paid their money to come in and be able to see the screen. So we don't, we wouldn't think that would be appropriate to have to have trees and the like in the middle of it, anyway. There is a significant area of existing foliage that will not be removed on the edge of the property. I think Mark can show you a little more about that in the detail when he gets up here. So those two things, the, the gravel and the, the waiver of the paving and the, the landscaping kind of, kind of go together. So we are asking for that, not only because of the fact that we're not going, we don't want to create all this impervious surface, but to be frank with you, it's, and I, I think Stephen's pitch about this, to some extent, is you're going to the drive-in. I mean, this is what you do in the drive-in. You don't, you know, you're not in a parking lot, you're in a, you're in a gravel space, and you're in this parking area, and he can explain the logistics of it. I haven't been to the drive-in in probably 48 years, so I don't know how it works anymore. But apparently, you don't have that pole anymore with a box where you pull the speaker in and stick it in the car. There's some other way that this works, and he, and he can talk to you a little bit about those logistics. The, the final thing we're asking to waive has to do with the, with the sidewalk that's going to be on the, this side, am I on there? Yeah, this side of the road that's going to get constructed. We understand that normally you would ask for sidewalk on both sides, but we're not going to have walk-up traffic. I mean, you can't come to the drive-in, because you can't hear unless you're in your car. So you're going to be driving to the site. There might be very, very limited foot traffic. Maybe there might be employees who walk to work, maybe they take the bus and get off. If Stephen had his preference, he wouldn't build the sidewalk at all, but we understand that there's, there's a requirement about that. So we're asking for a little bit of a concession about that by having the sidewalk on one side of the road that will access the site. And that way, if the employees need to, say, take a bus or whatever to get there, they can walk up. The sidewalk will connect to Commerce, but, you know, once you come up the sidewalk, it dead-ends at our site. So there's, it's not going to be like, there's going to be a walking trail or someplace for anybody to go and otherwise use that sidewalk. So those, those are the three waivers we're looking at. Stephen, I'm going to have you come up. You've got your PowerPoint that you want to talk just generally about the project and some of the analysis you've done.
Absolutely.
We just need your name and address for the record also, please.
My name is Stephen Sauerbach, 3502 Maple Leaf Drive in La Grange. So just as basic, why we were picking into Oldham County. I'm an Oldham County resident. I've lived here pretty much my entire life, born in Lexington, but moved here at the age of four, lived here ever since. My parents live in Oldham County. I have a wife, three kids in Oldham County, so we want to stay in Oldham County. As far as business-wise, Oldham County is a second-fastest-growing county in Kentucky, highest per capita income, yet has almost no commercial entertainment opportunities. We previously had theater in La Grange that closed down in 2013. I worked for Great Escape before they sold off the theater, so I'm familiar with the transaction. It was a leased building, they were having issues with it, and it was an older structure that was going to require a major upgrade. The landlord at the time didn't want to invest into the building, and then Great Escape actually sold the business to Regal. When they hit the same issues with the landlord, they shut down that location, leaving it vacant with the landlord, and he eventually went into foreclosure in 2015. So I think that the issues, some people have brought up whether if Oldhamate failed, why would a drive-in do well? I think that Oldhamate had unique circumstances around its location. And in addition. And in addition, it didn't have any upgrades since 1998 when it opened. So we are brand-new theaters that have stadium seating and digital projection, and Oldhamate didn't have any of that when it closed. Uh, as far as the market, we have, uh, by our calculations, over 580,000 residents within a 30-minute drive of the Commerce location. Just increasing that five minutes puts you all the way into downtown Louisville with about 840,000 residents. Um, there's not much demographics that involve with the new opening of the East End Bridge for traffic to see how much that increases our population, but we think this will be a, a positive draw to get residents even across from Indiana and into Oldham County. In general, for the, uh, movie theater industry, uh, going to the movies is the most popular entertainment option in the United States. It outgrows, um, theme parks and sporting events combined. Uh, just in 2015, $11 billion were spent on movie tickets, which is fif- and it's grown 15% since 2008. And of the residents of the United States and Canada, about 70% go to the movies at least once in the year. Of those people that do go at least once, the average is five and a half, almost six times per year that a person would go. So when we do our calculations, we use the 580,000 people within 30-minute drive time. By national standards, those 580,000 people, 70% of them go to the movies. Of those 70%, they go 5.6 times in a year. We have about $19 million in market within 30 minutes of our spot. So I think this is a very viable opportunity for our option, um, for Oldham County, that there's definitely a market to serve with the movie theater industry. So I know that our black-and-white, two-dimensional, um, picture leaves a lot to the imagination. So when we were planning for constructing a drive-in theater, we traveled across ten, 10 states to 12 different drive-in theaters, some that have been closed, some that are open, there's a couple that are new construction within the last couple of years. And there's a theater in Trenton, Georgia, just outside of Chattanooga, which mirrors a lot of our, uh, design. Uh, their main screen parking, which I'll show you, uh, is the same, essentially the same dimensions as ours. They have about 420 parking spots, or slightly larger, um, but their screen, uh, almost fits into the same design. So this will show you the aerial view, and given this is a, uh, much more zoomed in than our location. So our 100 acres turns out looking a lot smaller than theirs does. But the, the screen on the upper half, that is their main screen, which mirrors our Phase One screen. Um, that road that curls down through the center, that is their queue space for the ticketing areas with the ticket booths there. They have a concession stand on one side, and here's their projector booth on the corner. And so theirs, again, theirs is 100% gravel for the interior roadways and the parking. So this gives a view, um, I should go back. So this picture is taken from right about here, so standing in the grass behind the parking. This, this will give you a feel for, I guess, the scope and the size of this project. It is not, I mean, I, when you hear 474,000 square feet of gravel, that sounds like a tremendous number, and it is a large area, um, but it's all together in one spot. So out of the 30 acres we have, only a small portion of that ends up being covered. Uh, that screen is a, the white section of the screen is 40-foot tall, 80-foot wide. So that puts it into perspective. Ours is listed at 50-foot because it's on poles, uh, above the ground, which would be the same as ours. The screen doesn't go to the ground, you wouldn't be able to see it. So the elevated screen ends up with a top height of about 50 feet. Next picture is same thing, but dead-on to the screen. And so we anticipate to have a very similar, uh, layout to this, our design. And the reason why we had the shift in number of parking spaces. We shortened the Phase Two screen to widen the green space between the two. So just as you can see, people here are enjoying the, the green space in between the two screens. Uh, we reduced the number of parking spots in Screen Two so that we could in- increase the, uh, natural green area in between the two. Uh, so drive-in theaters, uh, our business, this will be a, uh, they refer to as a first-run theater. It'll show the standard blockbuster movies that are coming out in theaters on the day that they're opening. It will not be second-run or, uh, uh, older films that are showing, so we will be, um, presenting that. People can view from inside their car, some people will sit in the back of a truck, or, uh, chairs and blanket. There'll be space that they, the rows are wide enough to fit a car, have room to sit in a chair, still have, uh, more than enough space for the drive lane. In addition to people, we welcome to sit in any of the green spaces, uh, behind or to the sides of the parking. Uh, we provide playground area for children, uh, before the game, or before the show, or small outdoor games, horseshoe, cornhole. It's an opportunity for people to spend time outside. That's the whole benefit of the drive-in. It's not just there to watch the movie, because you can watch it at any of the nine locations in Jefferson County, but being able to on a day when it's nice to be outside, you can have the entertainment value of watching the movie that you wanna watch while also being outside. You have an opportunity to spend time as a, a group with your family, friends, or the community that's there versus in a darkroom in individual seats. Uh, we do plan on offering, uh, full concessions, um, with fresh-made food items there. So it'll be more than just the standard snack bar items to, um, homemade pretzels or, um, homemade chips, and the popcorn be fresh-made onsite as well. In addition, um, this screen, it is larger than all of the indoor screens in Louisville. I believe it ma- it's wider than the IMAX screen in the Science Center. I believe it's not as tall, um, but at, to that point, it's a drawl item. For people that are, um, big moviegoers, it's an impressive item, and a lot of people would travel to our site just for the experience on a large screen. Our project will use top-of-the-line digital projection. So we will have a high-quality presentation. As to Mr. Baxter's question about the sound, uh, sound nowadays can transmit through FM transmissions. It'll be a, a, uh, low transmission so that it won't go far off the site. Uh, but people can tune in from their radio inside their car, or even just a portable radio, uh, if they wanna sit outside their car or on the grass. We'll not have amplified sound that's projecting for the, uh, the sound of the movie is all individually played. As far as, um, into part of the question with traffic and such, we will have multiple ticket booths and this queue space before the ticket booths so that we can line cars for cars wide and as deep as we can on the property. But we also plan to utilize online ticket sales to be huge for us, so people could have a pre-purchase. It's a much smoother operation to get through, so we won't have the standard, uh, like a toll booth where everyone stops and pays. Now you have this Fastpass or the, uh, Riverlink where people can just drive on through. We'll do something very similar to that. They'll pause, scan their phone, scan their ticket, and they can move on through. So we're not fumbling cash and credit cards at the gate. Of the multiple ticket booths, there probably will be one that will accept cash and credit cards, but the other two can provide for quick access in. As far as the, uh, facility, uh, we do plan to coordinate with county police as necessary because it is a, a large gathering of people, and any large gathering of people, even if it's the, um, church picnics, they have police on staff for any time you have a large number of people on. So that's our goal to, in the, in the fluctuation, operation plans to be, it's only when it's nice outside. So essentially, it's from April through October, but it's always weather-dependent. And for our market, it's also school-dependent. So we probably won't even be expecting many people during the school week. So if we were open this week, school's in session, it's not gonna be a busy night tonight, but in the weekends, wonderful weather like it is today, hopefully it would be. So that's, that's the fluctuation when they're asking about traffic study or, uh, traffic assistance every single night. Probably won't be necessary. I don't think that on our slow nights, we will be busier than many of the other businesses on Commerce already are. Uh, this is just a zoomed-in site, uh, plan, so you can see, uh, in general, this is in general Phase One. Uh, we've designed Phase One that will cut off right about there. So we don't plan to do any of the, uh, gravel parking north of that drive. But when we develop Phase Two, we can just close off right there, gate that section, and then the traffic would go around the, the loop to the upper screen. On the right side, this is the, the queue space, uh, discussed. So once the customers enter the parking lot, it widens out into four lanes. We can hold a, quite a number of cars on our property that we wouldn't expect cars to be backing up. And even if they did back up some, it would be leading onto this private road and which is 1,000 feet before we even get down to Commerce. Uh, so for Oldham County, the benefits to Oldham County is providing an entertainment option. Uh, I think it's pretty common knowledge that most, a lot of people leave Oldham County for their entertainment needs. Uh, so this gives an opportunity to keep people in Oldham County while still featuring some of the best features of Oldham County. We plan to keep as much of the site wooded as we can, providing the green spaces that people can drive down, um, this nice corridor where they can spend time outdoors versus if this was designed as an indoor theater, it doesn't showcase anything of the surrounding area. Once you're indoors, it doesn't really matter where you are. So being in Oldham County will be a great thing for this outdoor opportunity. Uh, as far as, this is a unique opportunity. There's not another drive-in. The closest one in Kentucky is north of Lexington, in Paris, Kentucky. There's one in Georgetown, Indiana, which is the closest one by a drive, about 45 minutes from here. They're doing fantastic business there. If it's, if it was weather like tonight, I would guarantee they're gonna be sold out and turning customers away. So that's, that's what triggered us with the opportunity. There's definitely a market there. Uh, this particular site encourages the growth of the existing commercial and industrial area that we have on Commerce. You know, we had the, the prior site on, um, Old La Grange, which wouldn't have really contributed to the neighboring properties as far, but this, I think, will draw a lot of positive business to our areas. And again, this supports a, a family-owned business with Oldham County residents. That ends my presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I bring, oh, I have, I can, bring you up there. We have another drawing I can show, and this might help out as well. We'll put it wide, you can see it more of it than we can. So this is our site plan overlaid with the, um, it's close to existing satellite imagery. So you can see it's currently out.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Good afternoon. My name's Mark Madison. I'm with Milestone Design Group, 108 Davitry Lane, Louisville, Kentucky, 40223. Um, very briefly, just wanna touch on a few things. Uh, first off, uh, the Texas Gas easement that you all see very prominently through here, we have, we have spoke to these folks, we've got the parameters from them for design, and we are not proposing any permanent structures over that easement at all. We have got some sidewalk that crosses that, and they said that's perfectly fine, there's no problem to do that. They just wanna be involved in the process when we go through with our construction plans. Uh, secondly, uh, this area shown here, uh, is what's on our plan that was submitted as our proposed detention basin for stormwater detention. Uh, this is designed to accommodate both Phases One and Two. It is not designed to accommodate, in terms of size, the entire subdivision, but it is designed to accommodate this proposed development. Uh, and again, this, I use the word design, preliminary design, just so that we have an idea of how much space it might need. Uh, this is not in the blue line stream. We've got those also highlighted for you, so you can see on the plan. Uh, the only place that we're impacting, uh, the stream at all is just this one crossing, which is something that's, um, very normal and easy to manage, was the core. Uh, the development, as we talked about, is primarily, um, gravel. And as mentioned, uh, Oldham County's regulations, you know, they treat gravel as a pervious substance, a pervious surface. Uh, this gives us a, a greater opportunity to minimize some of that runoff. The roadway that's proposed as a public roadway is going to be built to the county standards, 24-feet wide, curb and gutter, stormwater structures built into the system, uh, and of course, it'll be, uh, dedicated to public use. The, uh, this area here is for employee parking and dumpster. The idea behind this is that we can gate this area off whenever they're closed to try to keep people from getting onto the site. Secondly, make it easy for dumpster vehicles to get in and out. Uh, the concession stand area is here, located between the two, uh, screens and two viewing areas. The dark areas, as, uh, Brooke had mentioned, were the handicap spaces. Those areas are going to be paved as well as sidewalks to and from the concessions and restrooms. So, uh, we've tried to address any ADA concerns we might have on the project. You also, the site is predominantly wooded, but you'll see that, uh, we're actually trying to show that we're going to preserve a lot of this along the perimeter. Uh, there'll be additional plans to make sure we're in compliance with the code as it relates to the perimeter, but we are, uh, going to preserve a lot around the, the buffer. The reason this show's so wide back here is there will be some grading being done. We didn't wanna represent something that's not accurate. Uh, again, we've talked to Texas Gas about the limitations on grading. Uh, that's the nice thing, we're, we're building ba- basically a pretty, pretty reasonably flat parking lot, but not completely flat because it's just kinda like stadium seating in a theater. So that slope actually works to our benefit a little bit. So, uh, we do not plan on doing any, uh, significant excavation. Uh, Texas Gas said we, we could do some with their, uh, input, but we could also do some fill with their input. So grading over that easement, uh, isn't gonna be a problem. That's all I have to say, unless you have some questions.
We'll have some questions here in a little bit, but, uh...
Can I ask, just if you would, just again, sort of explain the phase...
Mr. Baxter, if you get you to come up, so we can get it on the record.
Mark, if you don't mind, if you would explain the, the phasing again so that it's clear and, and how it will work with Phase One, and then once we get to Phase Two.
Okay. Uh, the public road in its entirety will be built as part of Phase One. Uh, the, this road, if you follow this mouse I'm kinda pointing with here now, the pointer, that road will be constructed and everything to the left of that will be constructed, including the concession stand, the employee parking, the dumpster, as well as the stormwater detention basin. The only thing that would not be constructed in Phase One would be, there's a small building that's planned for ultimately to have maintenance equipment there for the facility, uh, and the drive and parking area that's shown for Phase Two. Uh, as Stephen had mentioned, we'll gate this off when Phase Two comes around, and this will just be a, a gravel road that, uh, will, will not be used except for maintenance, and customers will then make this loop all the way around both theaters to get to the prospective screens.
Okay. All right. Mr. Baxter, is it?
I know you brought up the concern about the gas pipeline. Uh, to be honest, that tremendously concerned me. And the, uh, boardwalk pipeline came to the TRC hearings. We got to talk to them in person at the time. They own the pipeline that runs from Pennsylvania all the way to Texas. And there's, it's, co- parking lots on top of the gas line, pipeline are pretty common. Um, if you can, if I could zoom out from this picture, you can see where they cut out this gas pipeline runs, and you can tell pretty obviously where it goes. Notably, though, it goes under Southeast Christians' main campus. Their parking lot runs over top of this. And the big one that kinda gave me confidence was, um, in the middle of Lake Forest, this pipeline runs down the center of Arnold Palmer Drive, has northbound lanes on one side, southbound on the other, and a real nice golf link right down the middle. So the concerns over building, in that case, they have, they have much more money on both sides of that gas pipeline and those Lakewood, uh, uh, Lake Forest houses on both sides of the gas pipeline than we do. And in all honesty, it would cost them a lot more to have to access and dig up a golf course than it is, uh, for us to access this gravel if they ever need to. I did ask them, the local office, uh, out of Owensboro, they cover from Cincinnati to Paducah, I believe, and they said it's very rare that they ever have to access the gas pipeline from the surface. They have, uh, equipment that they send down the pipeline, uh, called Pig, that scans the pipe from the interior. If they determine that there's a weakness in the pipe, then they can directly identify the single location, dig it up, fix it, and then we can cover it back up. So in our case, the only thing we would have to replace would be gravel or in the one section of sidewalk where we cross it. But other than that, they said it's, it's very rare, and it's a 42-inch gas pipeline that they are not in the business of shutting down at any time if they can avoid it, so.
While you're here.
While I'm here.
Speaking about that same issue, on one of the drawings in Phase Two, it appears that there is a structure constructed on top of the gas pipeline.
Okay.
And, and I wanted you to clarify what that structure is.
Right, and I don't know. It, there's a small square that's in between the, uh, screen and the parking area. That square just represents the area for playground. We asked the, uh, pipeline in person about the playground. And in all reality, they don't really mind what you put onto it as long as we don't hit any depths. None of the playground equipment would exceed four foot for footings on any of the posts. They said that would not be any problem. It would just be the issue that we would have to reme- just be the issue that we would have to remove the posts if they had to access the pipeline in that exact issue. So the square on our black and white design map is just an area... Yes, I'll show. This just shows a markation of where we are expecting the playground area to go. It's not a physical building that's going there, just an area.
Thank you. Mr. Baxter?
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I would comment about, and I was remiss in this, I failed to mention when we were talking about the paving and the waiver for the paving, that you've got two other examples very close by. You've got Rocket Storage, which I understand is a waiver that you all considered, and you've got the Hind, the Watts, the hardware store that's going in across the street, and you had a waiver about paving on the back of that. So I would point out that there's, there is some precedent for that in this area.
All right. Does that complete your application, sir?
It does, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, let me ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone here to speak in support of? Yes, sir? I'll get you sworn in, and then we'll get your name and address for the record.
Okay.
Ms. Fox?
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Just name and address, please.
My name is Nick Comer, C-O-M-E-R, and I'm with East Kentucky Power Cooperative. And I want to point out that we are, we own the property that's adjacent to this piece of property, and we are not, excuse me, we are not necessarily opposed nor support this plan, but we would like to share some information about the power plant that we think is important for this to be known.
Well, let me interrupt you here just a second. There'll be an opportunity for you here in just a few minutes to provide, you know, either questions or testimony. This is more, more of a time to, you know, if you're speaking in support of this particular application. So we will have an opportunity on, in the application process here to, you know, to hear your concerns or, you know, but this was, just asking if anybody was here to support the particular application.
Okay.
So we'll call you back up here in just a few minutes. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in support of this application? Okay. Now, at this time, Mr. Comer, we are moving into testimony and questions by those opposing the application. So we'll call you back up here, and if you have questions or any kind of testimony that you'd like to make on this application, it'd be appropriate.
So as I, as I said, East Kentucky Power operates a power plant on the adjacent property. It's located immediately to the west of the proposed piece of property here. And...
Could you put that back up so we can, everybody will know what he's talking about?
So it's here.
Right.
I'll pull up my presentation.
Right. So where the arrow is pointing, that's, that's the location of the power plant. That power plant has been located there for approximately 15 years, a little over 15 years. East Kentucky Power Cooperative has owned that power plant for about 16 months now, and has owned and operated that power plant. And based on the information that I've seen, and we first became aware of this proposal for the drive-in when we received a letter from the Planning and Development Service, which was just in the past couple weeks here about this hearing. And based on the information that I've seen, I don't believe, what little we know about it, that this would affect our operations, but we believe our operations could affect certainly the ability of perhaps the patrons to enjoy a movie because the power plant includes three units or generating turbines. And these are effectively, they're very similar to jet engines on an airplane. And as you can imagine, they're very loud when they're operating. Now, there is some equipment around those that kind of deaden that sound and damper that to some extent, but nevertheless, when they're operating, and certainly when all three of them are operating at the same time, it creates quite a bit of sound. Now, we've done some, some sound studies in the area around there on the perimeter of the property. We've had measurements of approximately 45 to 60 decibels. Now, that's, I think, 60 decibels is typically a normal conversation. If we were standing, you know, a few feet apart and I was talking, that would be approximately what that is. Now, that's not real loud, but if you're trying to listen to and watch a movie, that could be distracting, could affect your ability to enjoy that. So I simply would like to come here today and share that information. Certainly wouldn't want to see a big investment made in this piece of property without full knowledge of the operations that are going on there at the power plant, and would be happy to answer any questions you might have about them.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. All right. Is there anyone else here that would like to either testify or have questions opposing the application? Anyone else here opposing the application? Okay. Seeing none? No. We'll now open it up for questionings of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. And commissioners, we've got about 30 minutes here on that. I have one question before we get started. Mr. Baxter, I'll address it to you. And then, lighting, how is that handled as far as, you know, when the movie's on? I'm sure you don't have big pole lights or whatever that light the parking lot, but for folks that needed to go to, you know, get snacks or restroom or, you know, what kind of lighting do you have on the parking lot?
I think you addressed that, didn't you?
Oh, did you?
Mark, I thought you had, you had said something about being, we talked about this at our meeting about the proposed lighting that was going to be on...
So there will not be any full-height light posts. So the vast, once the, when the movie is in operation, it'll be as, our goal is to be as dark as possible so that we get the best presentation on the screen. As far as directly around the concession stand will be lit, and that'll illuminate the area of the sidewalk that leads to the concession stand, but that is accomplished with short, just walking-height lights. We are not needing to illuminate for traffic purposes.
And you're not talking about any kind of light, light wash that's going to be, it's all going to be...
No, everything, yeah. We, yeah, we want to prevent any light wash at all getting towards the screen.
Cut off.
And a 90-degree cutoff, because that was the determination that we make it. So it's a light that is only shining down.
So it's like an LED-type light that would be like 90% cutoff?
Well, only just the angle of the light. It's not a lamp post with a free bulb. It would have a shield that only directs light down.
Okay. That was my question. Commissioners, I'll open it up now. Mr. Douglas?
Where do I start? Let's go with the power plant first. I have a question for him. My first question to you would be, on the grid, when the currents are flowing, the amperages pushing out, and those turbines are running, will there be any effect for the FM signal that they're using to interfere with static on that radio? Because sometimes I've been in it, well, I'm not going to testify, so anyway, but can you tell me how much that could impose for them?
Now, I don't believe there would be from the power plant. Now, in addition to the power plant, there's a high-voltage transmission line...
Correct.
...that runs along the perimeter of that property. I believe it's on the, it's adjacent to the property where the movie theater would be. And I am aware, and I should say I'm not an engineer, but I am aware that that can be an issue in some situations, the electromagnetic field that comes off of that transmission line. Now, the transmission line is not owned or operated by East Kentucky Power.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had for you. My question, next question would be for the engineer. I noticed there was two different renderings of architectural drawings based on the one that was presented to us by Mr. Soderback, and the site development plan that was given to us. There is a projection building 10 by 10 on the easement, gas line easement for Phase One. Unless I have a different one.
Mark, can you put that on the screen so everybody can see it?
I just want to...
So it's the 10 by 10 utility building. Did you change that from...
If, well, just to clarify, that should not be within the easement, and we can give you an updated plan. That'll show that, I don't know why that ended up there, but it shouldn't have been there.
Okay. And then, since you're already there, as you know, the topography of this lots, the water flows on that property flows, I presume, flows south, correct, to the blue line?
Well, because of the rivulets of the contours, it flows in several different directions, yes.
So are you changing, or will they be changing the contour of that topography to where it affects the blue line stream? Because I'm sure you're working with Corps of Engineer.
Well, no, we're, first off, if you look at the theater or the screens, slow down. I keep thinking in terms of a theater. If you look at the viewing areas on both lots, you'll see that they're trying to run to where the back to the front is following the contours. We're doing that in an effort to minimize the grading that we're going to have to deal on the site. Secondly, there's going to be a, much to our clients' probably frustration, a comprehensive either ditch or pipe system on the site to direct storm water as it runs down to collect it and put it into our retention basin, our detention basin. So we will not be altering any of the blue line streams.
Okay.
The only place, as I mentioned earlier, and you can see it right about here, is where we're crossing with our driveway.
Correct. I saw that. And then detention basin, any overflow, if there's water runoff, I mean, because there's a lot of gravel, gravel dust going into that detention basin, what would be filtered? Because there is a blue line, intermittent blue line stream just to the west of that.
Well, the basin will have to comply with all the county standards, including the MS4 standards that we have now, which will address that specifically, but I can elaborate further if you like, but...
But you will provide our engineer those standards?
Oh, we'll have to, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. My next question would be for, I guess, Mr. Soderback. Good afternoon, or good morning, Stu. You mentioned that there is going to be a maintenance building. Is that going to be built in Phase Two or Phase One?
The location, the maintenance building was originally designed to be going in with Phase Two. That's got not fit on one map. There you go. So that was... So at that point, it's rather conceptual at this point. It is designed to be all the way in the back, so I think that we can be able to accomplish the needs with Screen One just with a small shed that could be even below the 10 by 10 size to at least get through with Phase One. Because I wouldn't want to build a building, say, here where it works for us, and then we'd have to move it when we do Phase Two. The only design for a significant structure would be during Phase Two in the back of the project.
Okay. How do you propose to clean this area, these, this gravel parking lot with 450 spaces? Just being familiar with some drive-in theaters, how do you propose to clean that gravel area from debris after movies and garbage, trash?
Well, we'll do a cleaning walkthrough every night after show. So, I mean, I mean, we would hope for some cooperation with the customers to throw away their trash as they leave, but obviously, that's not always going to happen. No, we will do a thorough walkthrough for all litter after the end of every night.
Okay. And do you propose litter abatement, something around these parking spaces? Trash dumpsters is what I'm getting at?
Oh, correct. I mean, there will be trash cans or barrels available towards the exits as people are leaving that they could hopefully drop their trash out their window as they're driving through, are most common, but nothing that required a significant design into it.
Have you thought about, because you probably realize that if you've done your research on these drive-in theaters that you use gravel, that with the rainy season and winters, you've got potholes, you've got water standing. I see no green spaces except for the outlining areas. So you're going to have standing water in that gravel area.
Well, the gravel areas will be sloped. Now, just a slight slope but enough grade. And that's why when he, Mark was bringing up the design of these two screens, the, zoomed out too far on that one, the direction of these two screens is specific for this site. I would much rather have them at a different orientation, but because of the natural slope, this corner here, all, these are all two-foot contours. So we are at almost 18 feet higher at the back than at the front. We intend to keep as much of the natural slope as we can, and per the gas line, we can't significantly change the slope within the gas line. So our goal is that the person sitting in the back row, their car will be parked, I think it's coming out to about 10 to 12 feet above the front car. So we will have some natural slope. It's not steep enough that we should have rushing water to wash out gravel, but we do understand that significant gravel upkeep will be a routine maintenance item for us. And that was the intention with the storage shed. We will probably have a tractor that can smooth and grade gravel. And it's not just a topping off gravel. I think our current designs are at least six inches of gravel, maybe eight, with a geotextile fabrics available, so that we should not have the potholes and the ruts coming as we have a solid base to support the parking.
Okay. I had one more question that I'm trying to figure out. On your other rendering that the, you were doing your presentation, you were talking about the setback for the, your private road to overcome the excess traffic or whatever. On, on one of your screens, it shows the ticket booths being closer down from what's on our site plan or our engineer plan. So I was...
And that may be the difference between the Phase One, Phase Two?
No, it was on your Phase One, I think.
Not this one?
Correct.
So on this one, I don't know if they even put... And to be honest, I got confused when I first saw that little handy arrows pointing. Those are just directional arrows. The ticket booths would be at the last point of termination before the cutoff. So I don't know, they're not on this one. I believe that on the...
They're right before...
This will show me here.
Signal.
On this plan, so on this plan, they are shown right here. Ticket booths, Phase One.
Right. Okay. And then my final question, Mr. Chairman, is you mentioned no lighting at all, practically no lighting. So there will be no lighting on the sidewalks at all?
The, the area around the concession stands, because the only provided sidewalk is from the handicap area to the concession stand.
But I'm also interested, will there be no lighting on that sidewalk that's approximately 800 feet to the Commerce Parkway?
Correct. No, we will not be lighting along the public road.
And are you proposing any signs or anything?
No. I mean, we would have a sign at our entrance at the end of the cul-de-sac on our property. I mean, we would have a sign at our entrance at the end of the cul-de-sac on our property.
And then I fudged a little bit, I'm sorry, because I just came up with something else. The conditional use permit, and this might be for staff and it may be for you, on off-season or any other time, the conditional use permit is for the drive-in theater only? Are you intending to use it for anything else?
The only purpose is for the permit for the drive-in theater only.
As we all know, that drive-in theaters usually have swap meets, flea markets, but you're not asking for any of those.
We are not asking for any other options. I mean, the property as it's zoned, industrial park, has other opportunities. We are not seeking any other applications or permits at this time.
All right. And all, Mr. Douglas, that's it. Ms. Alberson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Soderback.
I'm sorry.
If I messed up your name, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
I'm confused. If you could help me out here. There is no blacktop for the parking, only gravel. How are spaces marked?
So our intention is we don't want to have, individual posts aren't necessary. So our design would have a roping system that would run along the rows. So we would be able to have a rope that would run in between each row. And so that would allow people to see the beginning and the ending of the row and then having a flag or a marker every 20 feet, so they'd know a park. Part of our goal is that they would have numbered spaces. So if we got into the issue, we wanted to do either reserved parking or some other opportunities that we would be, every parking spot would be designated through a roping system with like probably a cone or a temporary, a weighted post every 20 or 30 feet.
A weighted post? Is that what you said?
That is what I said. So like a...
I'm not clear about what you're saying at all.
I'm sorry. If you, they refer to pedestrian barriers, the, what?
Like a bollard?
Yeah, like a post that has a steel base and then you pull the rope between two. If you queue spaces at stores and lines.
Yeah, I understand that on the roping system.
Okay.
But individual spaces?
Right. So we would have, so the rope would only run, I guess, per...
Across the park.
Across the parking lot. And then for each space would have a marker, a plaque or a flag on the rope to designate which spot that they would pull up to.
Is there something that, I mean, this picture's not great.
In this picture, they used posts in their location.
Okay.
So they have...
They had to mark them with posts and...
They have 460 posts that you put your car in between two posts. Ours would have a single line and you would pull up to the line.
Okay. Is anybody else as confused as I am? Or am I just dense? Okay. While that picture's up there, good. How far is it from the back of this, of the parking area to the screen? And that's the Trenton, Georgia picture?
Correct. It's approximately 500 feet. And this is a good opportunity that's, in the background, you see a little white structure. That's their second screen on an angle. So just so you can, for perspective, it's not a wide structure that has much of a footprint side to side.
Okay. So people parking on the back, on the back row would have about 500 feet to look to see the screen?
Correct.
It would be that far away?
Yes, ma'am. And we travel, I mean, if, there's a theater we went to outside of Chicago, which their furthest parking spot is 1,000 feet. It's not unreasonable, given the size of our screen.
All righty. And that's 160 yards, which is a little more than a football field and a half distance.
Okay.
And that's quite visible with that distance and the size of the screen.
As far as the presentation of the film?
Uh-huh.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
That's why the, I can bring up the second picture we had.
That's good. That answers my question.
Straight on, you can see.
All right. Now, when you come into the drive-in area, am I correct that you have to drive all the way around the back of the parking area and come in from the other side?
Correct. Yes. So, yeah, the intention, you would proceed up once you purchase your tickets, then you would cycle around, because the goal is to keep a one-way traffic pattern. So everyone would enter the drive-in here and they could choose their row, park in a spot, and then at the end of the night, they could proceed to their end of the row, down and out. And we have a secondary exit here that some of this traffic could flow outward, but in general, everyone could come one direction down and out the bottom. So that's why it cycles around to the far side, come across to find your spot, and then exit out at the end of your row.
Do you have any...
Which, I don't mean to interrupt, which is actually the opposite on Phase Two. You would have, they'd have to cycle all the way around for the Phase One screen, but the Phase Two moviegoers would be going in from...
So in Phase Two, you proceed all the way to, everyone would proceed to the end, purchase their tickets. If you were going into the new screen, you would enter your screen right here, find your spot at the end of the movie, exit here. If you had bought a ticket for the original screen, I'm sorry.
I was looking at one of these guys. I was trying to...
I'm on the fire department. They must be dispatching for something. The, everyone would purchase tickets here, the back screen would enter at this point and exit here, the front screen would circle around and do the same thing, enter here, exit here. So the enter and exit would never change for the original screen. Everyone would cycle around the back of it.
And if you had 480 spaces with 480 cars there, and the movie is over, and all of those cars are to come out that one, what looks like, single-lane exit there?
Correct. Every, all the traffic would have to eventually narrow down to the single exit to get onto the cul-de-sac. So our goal is to, it funnels into a single lane.
Do you have any information on how long that would take?
I mean, we've...
480 cars?
Under that, it's a internal, I guess, customer service issue on our side. We want to promote the quick exit for people, but in honesty, it's the way that it has to happen for the drive-in. And that's the standard practice at all drive-ins across this.
And one other comment is that if there's other exits, then people are trying to come in those other exits. So they have a security issue, number one, and they have the possibility of having sales that they could be making, they're losing because somebody's sneaking in a back entrance. So that's part of the reason for the, we understand that, but that's one of the things, you go to the drive-in, you know it's going to take you a while to get out, so...
Okay. Thank you. Now, I have a concern about the handicap parking. Has there been any thought given? I understand, I'm assuming, that you have the concessions between the two...
Yes.
For financial reasons to only have to build one concession stand.
Correct.
Have you thought about having a concession stand somewhere, maybe in the middle of the parking area, instead of at the backside of one and the front side of the other?
I mean, we've looked at multiple locations. In this particular site, our goal was to not cross the gas line easement with any utilities other than above head electric. So the projector will need electric only, but by putting the concession stand on this side, which we will probably try to squeeze it as close to the gas line easement as we can, so we don't have to put water, sewer, electric, gas across their easement. So we are doing as minimal impact technically we can, but I think we have to go under the gas line to cross it with the sewer line. So now we're going way deep and it's logistical nightmare.
Don't want to go there.
Correct. And to be hon, we contacted the Department of Justice regarding handicap regulations for drive-ins, which, imagine that, don't exist. Vast majority of drive-ins in the country were grandfathered in before, they were constructed before ADA existed. Their recommendation was to treat it as a parking lot where handicap spaces are most accessible to the entrance of our structure. And that's why we designated the spots. So in one theater, it's last row, in the other theater, it's the first row and it's most convenient to those in need.
Yes, I have thought it, was thinking about the distance. You've got a football field and a half if you're in the first theater and you're in your face on the second theater. It's very close to the screen.
Well, both of the screens, it's, the scale's difficult, but from the screen to the first car is 150 feet on both of them. Both of them are identical design.
Right. But the handicap is in the back of the other. So if you want to see that... Hope it's not burning down.
It's a paramedic run and I'm not an EMT.
If you're seeing the movie, excuse me, in the first movie, then you're on the back row. If you want to see the other movie, you're on the front row and you really don't have a choice. You're not, you know, you can't choose halfway down or...
Well, the other benefit, we, I spoke to several people I know that are handicapped and in their, in their opinion, it's a drive-in theater. They can park wherever they would like. And if they decide that they want to park in the center of the theater and then drive up to one of the handicap available sites to use the restrooms and then go back to their parking spot, they're more than welcome to. There's nothing that would stop them from parking anywhere they want, enjoying the movie from their car and traveling on.
And to that... Sessors, I think, you know, they are meeting ADA requirements.
That makes sense, yes.
So, you know, I mean, I think that's what we have to look at. And so I think sometimes we get too much into the weeds and, you know, on this, but I mean, I think, you know, they definitely have to meet ADA requirements.
Right.
So, but let me, does that, is that your line of question?
That's it.
Okay. Well, let me, we're getting up on 12 o'clock here. I'd like to ask Mr. Comer, if I could, will you be able to come back after lunch? Okay. We might have some questions or, you know, whatever here after we get back from lunch. But I know I've got Mary Ann Smith and Sam Fanny's got some questions down here and I'm sure we've got some more questions that we wanted to ask. But at 12 o'clock, we usually try to take, go to lunch. We'll be back a little after 1:00. And I just asked that the commissioners, you know, don't discuss this amongst ourselves and also don't discuss it with anybody here that's in the audience. And so we will come back, we'll take a recess here for about a little over an hour and come back and then we'll open it back up here for a continuation of questions and then proceed on with the end of the docket. So with that, we'll take an hour recess.